Super. All right. Good. I'll start.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Ipswich. I'd like to call the October 21st School Committee Meeting to order at 7:03. Thank you all for coming. Caroline Jepson, our student rep will read the mission statement, please. Thank you.
Yes. Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be global citizens, who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice, and demonstrating competency.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Caroline. Announcements. The next school committee meeting will be held on Thursday, November 4th at 7:00 PM in the middle school, high school ensemble room. The school facilities working group will meet on Wednesday, October 27th, at 5:30 PM in the middle school, high school guidance conference room. The policy subcommittee will meet remotely on Tuesday, November 2nd, at 5:30 PM. Are there any other announcements? Oh, fabulous. Okay. Dr. Blake, special acknowledgements.
I don't have any this week specifically.
Okay. Citizens queries? Seeing none? Caroline, you're up again for the high school representative report, please. Thank you.
Hello, Ipswich School community. Below are some of the happenings at the Ipswich High School. In the arts department, our orchestra director, Michael Coelho, has made it into the top 25 candidates for the Grammy Music Educator Award in recognition of the innovative and engaging teaching styles that he developed for our orchestra during our COVID school year last year and for working to maintain music education in schools. He was selected from a pool of 2,000 candidates to be and was in the top 25. In the sports, the boys' cross-country team continues their undefeated season, winning their last dual meet against North Reading yesterday. The girls' volleyball team has elevated their winning streak to 13-1 over the course of the past week as a result of the game that they won the other day. And the winter sports registration has just opened, and we hope for a successful winter season. For clubs and fundraisers, this week is Spirit Week at the high school. Students have dressed for the theme of the day each day this week and have demonstrated their school spirit at outdoor sports games, pep rallies, et cetera. There's a competition between the classes about which class can donate the most amount of old clothing and canned foods, and these items will then be donated to the broader community. The Ipswich girls' volleyball team is also hosting a game against Marblehead this Friday at 5:30, known as the Dig Pink Match, to support breast cancer research. The Ipswich High School senior class is putting together their annual fashion show for next Tuesday at the Hellenic Center. Students will model clothing from various local companies in order to raise money for their class. And the Ipswich High School sophomore class, the class of 2024, has also been selling cider doughnuts and apple cider at various Spirit Week events in order to raise money for their class. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline, very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Caroline? You know, it's kind of like when I start mentioning people's names, it's always a mistake for me because I'll always forget someone and leave someone out or leave a category out. It's typical every time I do it. But I do have to tell you, because I'm a dad of one of the players, that the field hockey team is 12-1-1, so they're doing pretty well this year, too.
Oh, awesome. Yeah.
They had a big...
Predatory girl athletes was full.
Yeah. Yeah.
What was the reaction in schools at the news about Mr. Coelho?
A lot of excitement. He told us today about this. I saw it on a girl from who graduated last year. She posted it on her Instagram, but then I was like, what is that? He told us today, so that was very exciting.
Yeah, my kids were like...
It's super exciting.
They're not talking about it.
Is he competing against colleges and universities programs as well?
I'm not sure. I think it's just high schools.
Just high schools. I think just high schools, yeah.
Oh.
Hey, those things brought me to tears every time.
Yeah.
Just phenomenal.
I was telling my daughter, if he makes it to the Grammys, we should have a watch party in the iPad.
That would be awesome.
It's a great idea. Thank you, Caroline. For return engagement, we have Mr. Krieger. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Hi, everybody. Chubb, Dr. Blake, school community members. I'm here tonight to present a proposal for our overnight field trip for March 2022 to Washington. I've got a fair amount of information. I just want to make sure you have everything about the trip. So I'm going to talk about some of the background, the schedule, logistics costs, and COVID protocols, of course, and then kind of talk about the next steps. So for those of you who aren't familiar with Close Up, Ipswich High School has been doing Close Up for more than 30 years off and on. I've led six trips, and Scott Ince in the booth has been with me on three of them. In 2021, so in spring of 2021, Close Up did a virtual program, which we didn't participate in for a variety of reasons. And then in 2020, if we had gone on the trip, schools shut down on March 13th, we would have been in DC. So we didn't have a group go last year, which in hindsight, I was bummed about it, but in hindsight, I thought it'd be in DC when all this hit, and we were pretty fortunate. So the Close Up program is an eye-opener for a lot of students for a variety of reasons. You know, a lot of families travel to DC. This is not a family trip. This is a detailed program where students are immersed in Washington, DC. They meet students from around the country, and they look at real-world issues. And they talk about issues like drug control and gun rights. They talk about what we do about the rights. And they're doing it with students who might not share the same liberal or conservative bent. They get an opportunity to meet people from Washington, and they explore the city in a very different way. It's a study. It's not just, hey, let's look at monuments. What is a monument represented? What's our history, et cetera? In the package, you'll see that the frameworks, map sheets, the frameworks of 2018 are included. You'll see the alignment, a pretty detailed alignment with what our standards say and what's on the trip. And also for our students who are traveling away, for many of them, this is the first trip. I've had many students who, it was the first time on a plane for them. And, you know, they learn the challenges of what it's like to be on your own for a few days. They learn how to work with other students from around the country. And, you know, just having to navigate Logan and the DC metro is some pretty powerful experiences. So what happened, I talked to John, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell. I talked to Mr. Mitchell, and we said, well, before we bring the school committee, let's see if there's interest. So I sent out an email, and it said, if you're interested, reply. The school committee has not seen the request yet, so it wasn't committed to the trip, but we certainly didn't want to come here if we didn't have interest. As of today, 82 responses, which is much more than we anticipated. And just to give you a breakdown, about 44% of those are for ninth graders, 28 for 10th graders, 18 for 11, and 10% for 12. And of course, the eighth graders, who were eighth graders, are now all the way into sophomore year. Their last two years didn't have trips to DC. So that sort of makes sense. So that gives you a sense of where we are. So a little about the trip itself. You've got to get a schedule in the field trip package. I just want to walk through a couple of these things. The trip would be March 13th to the 18th, 2022. And we selected that week for a couple weeks, number one. It's the second week of the shoulder between winter sports and spring sports. So there's, the spring sport practice starts the Monday that they would return. So the other thing is, the following week is 10th grade ELA timecast. And I talked to the department head, Carlo Cansera, and we talked about it. We don't see any concerns, especially knowing where we are now, that this was the trip would be happening. And, you know, parent for the timecasting is cute, but it doesn't all happen in the last few days. So the week works really well. It's also a good time to be in DC. March is a nice time. We would fly to DC. We'd leave on Sunday the 13th, and Sunday is daylight saving time. So we've had flights at 4:00, we've had to leave at IHS at like 4:30, 5:00 AM. So that's always interesting. And then we fly to Boston, I'm sorry, we fly to DC. And we generally will fly into Reagan, sometimes into BDOI or Bellis, if you know DC at all. And that Sunday, we usually have time in the afternoon. In the past, we've always gone to the Holocaust Memorial Museum. This year, it's very limited, the number of visitors. We're hoping a lot changes by March, I'm sure we all are. But there are other options for trips. Close Up has a trip that would add little to the cost to take our group to Mount Vernon. And Mount Vernon is fascinating in the state. So there would be something for Sunday afternoon. And Sunday night is a welcome dinner. And then one of the coolest things that I like to experience is they have lobbyists come in, from liberal lobbyists and conservative lobbyists, and the kids talk about issues in small groups, and then they come together in big groups. And so that's how they kick off the weekend. Of course, they meet their roommates. On Monday, it's what we call Faces of Democracy. Again, where students are seeing the Link Memorial, what else? The MLK, FDR, and Jefferson Memorial. And again, you're not just seeing the memorials. We're talking about what democracy means. And so they're walking, they're moving around DC, they're talking about these things. And at night, they have a debate of hot topics of the day. Tuesday is the big thing during the day, is the war memorial study. So they see World War II, they see Korea, Vietnam, the big ones. And again, it's not, it's not just going there and seeing it. It's really, what has, where has war been for our history? What do these memorials represent, et cetera? And then in the afternoon, they will visit an embassy. We've had kids visit the Peruvian embassy before and some other embassies. And then at night, a fun night for them is they have dinner in Pentagon City, which if you don't know Pentagon City, it's like a huge food court. And then they get to tour the iconic Iwo Jima, the US Supreme Court memorial, raised with the flag of Iwo Jima. Wednesday's Capitol Building. So Wednesday has historically been the highway. Things have changed. COVID and the events in January 6th have changed the Hill. Right now, the Hill is pretty much locked down. The US Capitol is closed to visitors, the Supreme Court is closed to visitors, Library of Commerce is closed. So let's hope that by March, all this opens up. But in addition to those things, what students do is they get to meet with our representatives. We've been fortunate over the years. We've, every year, we've had a chance to meet with Congressman Moulton and before, Congressman Tierney. And we've had FaceTime with Elizabeth Warren, as well as Senator Markey. So whether we meet on the steps of the Capitol or in one of the office buildings, it's part of Capitol Building to see what's going on. And again, we're hoping that things lighten up by March, and there's a good chance it will. At night, there's a cultural event. In the past, we've gone to the Kennedy Center. Again, with COVID, the Kennedy Center might not be an option. The Kennedy Center, I believe, has a vaccine mandate to get enough to show proof of vaccine. So right now, they're doing some other cultural things, like going to Old Town Alexandria, and they've got a couple different menu options. What they are thinking about is if there's still vaccine mandates to enter a theater, what they're trying to do is say, okay, if all of Ipswich is vaccinated, we would go to the theater. And if other schools are not, we get to go. But that's not confirmed. They haven't confirmed that yet. Thursday, again, is a community action workshop where they'll go to neighborhoods around DC that we would probably never go to. And they talk about the role the government plays in the community. And then they finish off at Arlington National Cemetery. And then there's a night, the night is a banquet and what I would call an awkward dance, but the students love it. We do not participate in it. And then we fly back on Sunday. So the travel. Again, we fly to DC. We make requests, so we've always, every year, we've phoned Jeff to look at that stuff. But we don't get travel plans till January. So they get all the information, and then they'll send us our travel plans. The hotel will be in Virginia, most likely, uh, crystal city. Most likely, Crystal City. There's a hide there, there's a building there. And Crystal City would be the perfect place. It's close to a metro. There's a metro stop, like 10-minute walk, and I think it's the blue and yellow line into DC. All the travel is either done by bus or a Capitol Building will take the metro into the city. But the travel is all taken care of. We don't have to worry about any plans. And then all the transfers are taken care of. So we are picked up by a coach at the airport, and then we go back to the airport in a coach bus. And also, we're going to use the school bus to take us from Ipswich to Logan and back. So a bit about the cost. Total cost of the trip per person is $1,125. That cost is inclusive, so it covers everything. It covers, you literally could come to this program with no money. It's all inclusive. But of course, people will want to get snacks. They, in the hotels, they will order late-night pizza, and they'll have souvenirs. So they can do that. The $1,250 covers all admission fees, all food, transfers, everything. There's a $500 deposit that is required that is due by March, excuse me, by November 9th. So we'll get the word out, and by November 9th, you've got to submit $500 deposit to secure the trip. And then that money is refundable until December 1st. After December 1st, everything that's paid is non-refundable. Okay? And that's been Close Up's policy forever. The deadline to pay is January 13th, and that's when we'll get our travel plans as well. There is limited, very limited scholarship money for Close Up, but I did talk with John, and John said, we will meet with any family that has financial issues. And I certainly can't speak to that, but John said we will have confidential meetings. We don't want, we don't want the money to be a barrier to any student. So, and then parents on their own can purchase travel insurance. Close Up does not sell it, obviously, but parents can get their own cloud insurance. As far as the cost of school, the cost to school will be for substitutes. You know, it's a week-long trip, and we generally look at 15-1 chaperone to student matchup. So that's, Close Up has no guidelines, it's really up to the district. So I just want to give you a snapshot of the COVID policies. This is now. So right now, DC has an indoor mask mandate. Virginia has no mandate. All Close Up staff are fully vaccinated. Everyone is fully vaccinated. The Close Up policy is whenever you are inside, whether you're in the hotel, a government building, when you're entering or leaving a restaurant, and when you're in buses, you are masked. Close Up provides masks, or our students will probably bring some, but Close Up has, you get a cloth mask, and then they have full-time, full supply of reusable masks, and then they have hand sanitizer. The protocol is in place for if a student does become sick. The protocol is, if a student is sick, their room, their room is where they will stay. So the student stays in that room, and then the roommates move to another room. Okay? Also, Close Up communicates with parents. And then Close Up partners with Georgetown Pediatrics and Georgetown University Hospital. If a student has to be tested, it's done at Georgetown. They are taken by Close Up, and they follow the CDC guidelines for close contacts. When parents sign up for the trip, there are all these policies that are laid out and parents sign a release to see everything that they are doing. I will tell you, I had a lengthy conversation about this. They have thought about it, obviously, this is their bread and butter. So they are, everything is now, and they're looking ahead. And of course, depending on what's happening, they will change the policies. However, they don't expect to see any changes by March as far as masks off or anything like that. So that is, that's the summary. So what's the next step? Parents, if school committee approves, parents will be sent an email tonight or tomorrow. And that'll be an invitation to a Zoom session, which I'll do a Zoom session on Monday night at 7:00 PM, where I'll, again, the agenda will be overview of the trip, the cost logistics, and then any questions, of course. Parents can, we will record it, so if parents are able to make the Zoom, they can watch the recording. And then everything is done online. Parents will say, yes, I want my child up online. We'll register them, give them an ID, and then parents will complete the application. All payments are done online. You can pay by credit card, online check. And the cool thing also is, you can set a link to family, friends, and some companies match donations. So again, after we have everyone committed, we'll have a meeting in December to talk more about the trip and prepare. So it's a fantastic program. You know, COVID and what happened in January 6th has changed DC. But what I've loved is, the program is still intact, and there's a great opportunity for our students to experience stuff that they will never experience. We've talked with kids afterwards, and it's truly life-changing. So, you know, I certainly, hopefully, I gave you an overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the trip or the program, anything.
Move to support.
Second.
So you've, you're capturing 15% of the high school, it looks like, with 82 students. How many do you think will...
That's a great question, because there are students who did fill out the survey, and now will say the trip is on, and they might join. There are parents who will say, I signed up, but now that I'm thinking about it.
Right, no, I get it.
Yeah, so it's, we don't have a limit for Close Up. Close Up says, bring as many as you can, they've got spots for us that week. I, you know, Chubb, I don't know. We've never, we've never taken, since I've been doing it, we've never taken more than 30, right? 30.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens. But, you know, we'll support it.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
Maybe I missed this. Does Close Up provide, like a trip guide that does sort of the education piece?
Close Up staff is with the students. Close Up staff, the ratio for dev is about 1 to 15. So they are trained, a lot of them are history majors, government majors. They are the ones that are with the group, they're called program directors. So you might have, you might have three groups on a bus, and then they'll go in different directions with their program directors.
That's real clear.
So I really appreciate you putting this in that middle season in March. That's a big deal, especially with so many people who haven't had a chance to go to DC and who want to participate in athletics. So oftentimes, trips that are stuck in the middle of the season just can't work for a lot of kids. I really appreciate that. Also, I assume free and reduced lunch kids will get some sort of sponsorship automatically, or...
Yeah, John and I talked. I will never speak for John, but the feeling is that we don't want a kid who wants to go, not be able to go for the finances. So he committed to working with students and families.
And will there be fundraising opportunities for the kids to do things? Or is that something you coordinate, or the kids can coordinate?
So over the years, I've tried to fundraise. At the end of the day, I would love there to be fundraising. The parents, quite honestly, the parents have to get involved, and we've tried and tried and tried. We had a, you know, we had a yard sale once, and, you know, we had 25 kids, I think, go that year out in front of High Street, and we made about $2,000. And in the grand scheme, it's not a lot, but it did matter to some. But the reason that I believe, like, this person sold this much, they should get more. So I would love to fundraise. I would love to do it. You know, as you know, every sport team, every group fundraises. But I would love to, and that'll be something that'll be on the table to see if parents can get, engage in it, well.
And finally, anecdote. My wife's first airplane trip was to project. It's been going on for a long time.
I like that. Good.
Jeff, question. When COVID first happened, we had some concerns, and we had some contracts that had been signed with companies regarding cancellation. So any idea, maybe I missed it in here, what happens if events, either in Washington or with COVID, change the dynamic? Are we able to get that money back, and what does that look like?
Sure. When COVID hit last year, and they had to cancel, they refunded money.
Okay.
When you say change that dynamic, that's really important. So right now, some of the dynamics already changed a little bit. If the trip is on, there isn't a refund. And, but I, you know, who knows where it'll be in March?
Okay.
But I feel like they handled the dynamic changes pretty well.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good, if you need scholarship money, the IAN would be a great place, too, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, got a motion in a second.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Thank you. All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. Have a great trip.
We'll keep it posted. Thank you.
Aye aye. Aye aye. Okay.
All right. Well, Chubb is setting that, signing that. Next up this evening is the MCAS presentation. This is an annual event. At some point after we get the MCAS results back, usually around this timeframe. So we asked Tracy Wagner, Director of Teaching and Learning, to put together a presentation. This year, it looks a lot different than it has in prior years because of how the MCAS was administered and all of the different anomalies associated with it. So thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Tracy. Thank you for coming.
I was thinking about how I want things to return to normal. I don't know that in return to normal, I meant my annual MCAS presentation. But here I am, seeing you all. This didn't happen last year. So here we go. So here's an overview of the presentation tonight. I am going to talk about what Dr. Blake mentioned, the long list of things that were different structurally, and the ways that MCAS was delivered and set up, and how the state has reported the data this year. We'll do a data share. Everybody's got access to the data here. Anyone is able to Google the name of a district and then 2021 report card of any district, and you can see the data there. You can disaggregate it. We'll talk about that. So we'll do a quick data share, and I'll give you the trends that I see. And then you're welcome to dig deeper. And if anyone has individual questions, I'm happy to follow up. So we'll talk about what the data tells us. And most importantly for me, look at connected guidance from the state. Why the state was given that guidance to use for data, and what the next steps are. Presentation. So what state standards did 2021 MCAS assess? Some of you might remember that usually this slide would say, next generation, which is the new MCAS aligned to all the new standards versus legacy. There's no more legacy MCAS. All it is to say, everybody took MCAS that matched the new standards, so that are skill-based. The writing is now more about reading different pieces of evidence and synthesizing them, very open response. So here are all the grades and all the MCAS that were taken last year. That said, there were a lot of differences. So I'm going to talk through what was different. There are a couple slides of this, because there were a lot of differences this year. So the first is that usually in grades three through eight in ELA, which is English and math, they would take two long sessions across multiple days. However, last year, the state instead went to one random shorter session. So that's important, I think, because when we look at the data, it's not the long period of time, but the long average. It's one randomly, or the state-chosen session that was shorter that the kids took. So that's one difference. Testing location options. Believe it or not, students could take the test in person, and they would always have been learning in person, to take it during the day. They might have chosen to be remote last year, and then they could choose to come in for the short session and take it in person, or they could choose to be remote and take it remotely. So there were around 20 students who were remote, who chose to do it remotely, about double that much who were remote students who chose to come in. So again, that tells me a story about learning environment. They're in a place they're not usually. And then the rest of the students took it when they could. So because of that, I'll talk in a little bit about how the state has given guidance around what you can compare between districts and even schools within districts, and what they're not saying we should compare. We'll come back to that. Current seniors. So current seniors only ever took one of the... Current seniors, so current seniors only ever took one of the MCAS. So there's science, there's ELA, and there's math that you have to get a certain assessment leveling on in order to graduate. So current seniors only ever took the science one. They took biology back when they were in the ninth grade. So the state cast changes in the competency determinations. The state said last year that the current seniors don't ever have to take English MCAS. They don't ever have to take math MCAS. They need to pass the equivalent ELA or math class their junior year. So that's the case there. However, the state said, and this actually happens either next week or soon, you might know, seniors could come and they could choose of their own volition to take the ELA and MCAS, math MCAS, in order to qualify for the Addams Scholarship. So talk to Mr. Mitchell, we have 22 students who have signed up to do that. The Addams Scholarship is a competitive scholarship. You need to score top in all the MCAS and then the top percentage of the MCAS in your high school or school district, if there's more than one. And then you earn a scholarship to a Massachusetts public school. However, it's not women board, it's not food, it's not books, it is solely the tuition of the class. But anyways, we have about 22 students who elected to come in of their own volition and take MCAS to see if they can match that scholarship. So that's the current seniors. Current juniors, current juniors took MCAS, ELA, and math. And those are the scores we'll see represented. They didn't, however, ever take science because it was during the pandemic when they would have had their science. So for the science, they get the competency determination, which says if their ninth grade year, they were in a biology class and they passed competency determination. So if that more than enough changes, here's some more. So here is the student growth percentile, which you usually hear me go on and on about, which is where they take a student and over time compare the student to a like cohort. And over the time, MCAS report will show that like cohort of students compared to this child is above or below the same. Anyway, they drastically changed the way that they calculate so that algorithm for student growth percentile because they had no previous scores to compare it to. Should anyone be so mathematically inclined to want to know that algorithm? I have a handout that is double sided, very teeny tiny font, but you're welcome to have it.
Good, I'm good.
But if you would like to have it, I can pass out later. Usually also a part of this presentation is accountability data. This is new as of a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic. I think its actions is very helpful. It was attendance, graduation rate. It was looking at your lowest performing 25% of students, especially those who vulnerable populations, and making sure that all those factors are put and are supporting student work. The state has published no accountability data this year and has said that that is something they weren't able to do and that they thought was not feasible, given the pandemic. Sorry that part of the presentation is not here. There's no district comparisons. So the state has said, because the families who choose how the children took MCAS, that even within, be even discouraged, although we will see comparison between like schools within district. Because you could have one school that 100% the kids were in person, they always were in person and they took it. You could have another school where the kids were 50%, you know what I'm saying? So it's kind of like, you know, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, if you like. Honey apples to whole of balls or something like, you can't even compare it. So there's no district comparisons and there used to be all these cool tools online where I could pull up different districts and make people scatter charts for you. They took them all down, can't even find them. So there's no district comparison of tools, which we are looking at. That's why. I promise we're almost done with differences. Last one is that the student report that parents got sent home looks really different. I think in some helpful ways. One is that if, this is what's sent home and you're imagining it, see, you're on this side. If you go up to the right, there are questions that the parent can ask their child and that the parent can ask the teacher. They changed it so those questions relate to the grade the child is in now. And that's because of guidance and research the state did that I'll talk about in a little bit. The other thing that's just kind of quirky is there's always this weird dotted line. You'll see a little green arrow that says 510 and there's a gray dotted line. So there's algorithm by which the state says, if your child were to take MCAS multiple times, they would probably perform within this range, right? So it's a quantitative piece. So they changed the algorithm for the dotted line this year. So you might know it on your own, Charles, it's much longer. Sometimes it varies way off to the side. So all this speaks to how the algorithm changed because instead of giving the multiple long sessions, they gave the one very short one. So it makes, it must make it more difficult. So that looks a little different than, I had a couple of questions from you about that. So I'll mention that. Okay, so how the data is presented for you here changed a little bit this year? There's a first slide that is at the elementary level for the two schools combined. You can see the years, I know it's tiny for you if you look up there. Again, all this data is online. I encourage people to look if they want to. And then, so here's grade three, English, both schools combined, math, both schools combined, over time. And then I have a slide where I break it off by school. Please remember the guidance from the state is actually not to do that, but I think it's important to look at and I know this committee would like to see that. The CPI is blank. That means composite performance indexes and it was an accountability measure. And it was taking kids who had taken in previous years the old standards and now are taking MCAS into new standards. And since none of those things are here this year, I don't know whether state didn't just remove it, but they just left it blank. So that's what that means. So what I did share this year is the state comparison, which I think is helpful. Our numbers for MCAS are lower. I might know what the way to say that, in grades three through eight. They're lower in the state in grades three through eight. And I will note some trends that I see looking at the data and we'll look through this and then look more importantly, I think, what we're going to do about it and what interventions we will do and how it was a research base. So here you can see grade three ELA, grade three math. For what it's worth, if you're interested, I find what's helpful is I take the percentage in the school of exceeding expectations. I add it with their meeting expectations to make one percentage and I compare it when I add those two in the state. That to me, I've just found over time to be really helpful. So you can see that. So here is grade four. Grade four as a grade for us and when we break it down and when you look at by state was substantially lower as a trend overall. There is lots of exciting supposition on my job like boards or fun places about what questions were chosen and when they took the big sample or trunked it down to the small, why that might have been. So that's that piece. ELA, there's math. So grade five takes three MCAS. They take ELA, they take math, and they take science. So here's grade five, breaking down between schools. And there's math, there's science. So the split in the science is because in 2018, it was old standards. That's why the CPI is there, the comparison to, and then starting to clean that, excuse me, to the new. So I'll talk more in depth about the trends we see in general across elementary schools. I see a need for more writing instruction support. This makes sense because the new standards see writing and how it's expressed upon MCAS in a really different way. It used to be narratives. It used to be, I hypothesize it, but choose something from your summer and write about it. A first person perspective, the old school one. New is read this poem about justice. We'll get this editorial cartoon about justice. Read this news clip from 1912 about justice. What is justice? Use evidence to support your answer. Very, very different. So I've been talking a lot with the elementary principals about ways we can bring in more writing instruction to support our students in writing at the elementary level, in particular around that kind of evidence based argumentation. That's also because the state has really shifted from an ELA MCAS that's solely English literature to one that is much more humanities focused. So we'll look on that. And you saw last time I saw the presentation from Jen and Nina, I'm happy about IM and IM math, which I think really speaks to become math and mathematically thinking that MCAS now assesses and we'll come back to that in a little bit. So here's grade six. So grade six math. Math course is one, so there's a grade six, or ELA, sorry, and math. Grade seven. Grade seven ELA. Grade seven math. Again, we saw the same trend in writing at the middle school where there, I think, is a need and a factor in the writing pilot this year, which I think will be really helpful. And it's all about evidence based argumentation, not so much narrative writing anymore. I love narrative writing. Undergrad is actually great writing, but that's worth them, they believe in it. But that's not what MCAS assesses anymore. And here's grade eight. Ninth grade class. And ELA. And their math. And grade eight takes science. So they're all science scores. So the other piece that anyone actually can access through their report cards for a district is you can disaggregate the data. So that is to say you can break it down by subgroup. So you can look at it by gender, by economics. You can look at it by how the student identifies racially when they do the survey or MCAS. You can look at it by lots of different factors. So that's another piece I'll talk about that at the school based level we've been looking on, but you can have to see that data if you're interested. Grade 10, so grade 10's current juniors is the one MCAS where they need to pass it in order to pass. They did not change the competency determination where you could pass the class and not pass MCAS. So this class needed to pass MCAS. And so you can see those scores, who did very well in grade 10. Hypothesis about, I always like to say with this that to me, it reflects their education K through 10. It's the building towards, students know this one is the one that really counts too. So I was proud to see these scores. And their math, compared against the state. Again, all those shifts are present at the 10th grade. MCAS now, the 10th grade one was also the same format for better or worse. So it was, you know, the two, three, four days worth of ELA and math. And then they didn't take the science because that was the pandemic year. So this was standard formatting, but this test did not change. I always like to say MCAS is just one of many forms of assessment in ACTS by which students show us what they know and are able to do. And I am wanting to report out too about not only how we're looking at this MCAS data, but what we compare it against. So through funding, in particular ESSR funding, we were able to purchase more benchmark assessments for kids so that it's not just a once a year dip like MCAS is, it's all the way along. So Jen and Nina talked some about STAR. So our renaissance is an assessment that we picked up for elementary students. Short, 15, 20 minutes, the kids do it a couple of times a year. Teachers get the data instantaneously and Jen and Nina, when their coaching can help, align it with the IM curriculum, so that's one piece. DIBELS over here is a reading assessment that our early grades take. We now have an electronic version and we upgraded to the latest ones, we have that this year. Lexia, those of you with younger students might hear kids talk about it. There's a task called RAPID, which I think is very helpful. And we take the rapid assessment for kids and we compare it against the ELA math data and see what trends are there. And then we have AP, of course. And also there's tons of assessment methods that aren't standardized according to this, like being outside and doing lab work and IM sorts that we heard about last year. And there's just a key picture of kids and consequences. So how are we using the MCAS data? The MCAS data is one piece of data we look at, it is important. And I find it's especially helpful to look at it alongside other data sources so you can see the trends. So in all the schools, they are either doing or they have done data reviews where I sit with principals and we look at the data together and then they bring it to teachers to do the same thing, to look at it, what are the trends, what are we going to do about it? And we look at it through Compass, which is our curriculum committee of teacher leaders. We compare the data along other assessments. And then we use it to support interventions, extensions, and just in time curriculum. That's a state buzzword alert right there and I'll talk about what that means in a minute. And we'll apply DSS's acceleration roadmap guidance throughout. So in the summer, the state came out with something called the Acceleration Roadmap. Teachers in summer PD learned about it, the administrative team looked at it. And then what after the MCAS scores came out, the state came up with new and renewed guidance about it. And I thought it might be interesting for you to know that. So there are two versions of the Acceleration Roadmap. One is for school leaders and one is for teachers. They're all research based, we'll look at a little bit of the research. And I think it's actually really helpful. And when they say accelerate, I think accelerate is not the right word for it. Accelerate makes me think going down the highway and I'm just pumping on the gas to get to Ipswich, full speed ahead, right? I never do that, but you know, accelerate is not so much what it means. Instead it means accelerate, so continue moving the curriculum forward. Don't remediate. That's a little bit of what that means. So acceleration means, and we'll look at some research that shows why, especially for students who are, students who are vulnerable populations and students who might be behind grade level. Research shows that they will gain more over time by continuing to move forward in the curriculum in an age appropriate way, instead of backpacking, backpedaling and going back and reteaching units that are not age appropriate anymore. So if you accelerate, we talked about this with IM too. IM does a great job of scaffolding this in. In a child's day is in the fifth grade, teachers continue going forward with grade five curriculum, using all these benchmark assessments we looked at to find the standards in the areas where there are gaps and where students need help. We build in, here's buzzword alert, just in time supports for students and keep moving forward. You don't go back. So there's some examples here of what that looks like. And the state actually has a lot of pretty helpful people around it. So why? So the stating age in this giant research study and found that students of color and from low income backgrounds are more likely than their white, wealthier peers to experience remediation, meaning they are more likely to be in classrooms where they are not at an age appropriate curriculum or content level. And as you can imagine, if a child's say is age appropriately in the sixth grade but put in a remedial class that teaches fourth grade curriculum, they will forever continue to be at that lower age band, right? Therefore, not able to access AP curriculum in the same way and have different choices in their education. So the state has a lot of really interesting data done through multiple consultancies and organizations around this if you're interested. And then came to this importance of grade level work. I like this quote, "The reality is that students struggle not because of their race, language, or poverty status. They struggle because we don't offer them sufficient opportunities in the classroom to develop the cognitive skills and habits that will prepare them to take on more advanced academic classes." It's a whole body of research and work around this that is really interesting. Incidentally, this book, Culturally Responsive Teaching and Brain, I highly recommend. It was the book that we read for our summer book club with a group of teachers who volunteered to do it and Dr. Blake. And it's also the book we're going to use as And it's also the book we're going to use as our common text with the middle and high school, the whole faculty this year. And you have a question for that. So here's some examples of acceleration, not remediation. Acceleration would be eighth graders read eighth-grade texts with scaffolds. The teacher finds out that particular students or groups of students need supports. They build it in, make it go forward with the curriculum. Remediation would be taking eighth-grade kids and having them read the sixth-grade texts exclusively. Research says if that doesn't work, the kids will always be behind. Same thing with math. So math acceleration, eighth graders engage in eighth-grade math content, building the just-in-time supports. Math remediation, you'd be taking eighth-grade students and starting them back in sixth and seventh-grade lessons. They will always stay behind. Incidentally, in this presentation from the state, the math curriculum, they recommended and used as the exemplar was IM, which I felt great to see, because there they have scaffolded in the just-in-time supports, so that teachers have guides to move forward, build it in with kids.
Do you have a specific question on that?
Yeah.
Does that mean we can teach algebra to all eighth graders?
I love how it all comes back to teaching algebra to all eighth graders. I'm a big fan of that. And I think the model would be if we started--
It sounds like that's where you'd go.
Yes. And actually, that is the guidance of the state. The state is actually a big proponent of eighth-grade algebra as well. Yes. But you can see that students, and research shows students from certain demographics would be at a disadvantage if we were to take them, say, even as third graders, and be using first or second-grade curriculum because they missed it. They would forever stay behind. And that's not okay. And research shows this is not happening. They're okay. Acceleration in action. IPS priorities and next steps. So we continue with the adoption of our curriculum. The MCAS data we showed spoke to the new math curriculum. Speaks to looking at new writing supports and evidence-based argumentation. All students, in particular, grades three through eight. Speaks to moving forward, getting initiatives restarted, right? So that's all good. Ensure that grade-level content is incurring. We're talking with teachers a lot and working to support them. Because as you can imagine, the acceleration model is really nuanced kind of teaching. They need all these tools. We were able to pick up the grant funding to really stay in touch with what students are and they're learning. So we're supporting teachers in that model. We're seeking to use data more. So we at the elementary level have data days and time scheduled. The doctors, teachers will do, they'll look at it. And also at the middle and the high school, we've got just-in-time supports. And support educator collaboration. We already have those models in place, which I'm really proud of. And we especially need them right now to support teachers and especially our students in these models. I always like to say thank you. MCAS was the result of not current teacher. It's also all the teachers that the students had. It's also what the students show us, you know? And thank you to all of you supporting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's real clean.
So first of all, thank you, as always, for an incredibly informative presentation. I think one of the valuable things we always learn isn't anything really about the students. It's about what you and our educators really want to use this information for and where you're thinking is. I really appreciate the thought you put in to bring this acceleration piece forward and how it's going. I also think of this as a great time of opportunity, because we've got the ESSR funds and we've got a philosophy of, you know, catching-- not catching kids up, but that would be remediation, but accelerating. Everyone having the resources to do it this year. So I think this is an exciting time. I'm wondering, what do you think you learned about the students of Ipswich and how they dealt with the pandemic problems? This exercise of MCAS and reviewing the data and what our next steps are?
Really good question. I think, just me, but we have the data. I think the fact that 10th graders who knew they needed to pass the test frankly, doing so well, is really a testament to one, students wanting to do well, wanting to show to their community that they can do well. I'm proud of that. And for the students in three through eight, there were clearly new struggles there. However, we are right in line with the state. So it's not an egregious story. And the fact that, I didn't actually go into, one of the reasons the state says not to compare district to district is because districts have wildly, wildly different attendance rates for MCAS. There's some districts only recording 60, 65% of kids even taking it. We had 100. We had 100. So that shows me that the kids showed up. They cared. The teachers got them there. That's amazing. And so that perseverance, I'm really proud of. And these other pieces, we can look at this. We can do this. We already have the systems in place before the pandemic, and now we know they're really working. And you're right. Now that we have the ESSR funds and we can pull in the just-in-time pieces, we got it. But I'm proud of how people did, even though the data is not as good frankly as it usually is. I know why.
It was an incredibly challenging time, but hopefully with resources and with effort, we can make a big difference.
I agree.
So thank you.
I just have a process question. The, going back to 10th grade, you're right, when it counted, they did it. And, so all students pass the MCAS when they partially meet expectations and above, correct? So you have a 4% in the school, in our schools, that did not meet expectations. So they have two years, their junior year and their senior year. How do you get them to a level? Because I signed, I didn't sign 4% of diplomas as certificates.
Exactly.
So take us from not meeting expectations to getting a diploma in a brief, you know? What do you do?
So prior to this year, when the state would do the accountability data, although they didn't do that, they did provide us with this in the fall. They identify and provide us with lists of students who are in those categories. Maybe we can find it too, obviously. But they show us not only students who are at risk of not meeting expectations, not graduating, but students who are in the lowest 15, 25%. Principals actually get that list over the summer. And we look at it together, check its accuracy. And those are students who we try to figure out why. So you know about tiered supports, right? Everyone's in the tier one support, doing just-in-time interventions. They might be students who are on five or four plan. Might be students who took MCAS or an IDP or an alternate assessment. So we look at the data. We know who the students are, and we provide them with support. They take it again, essentially. And I'm happy to say, it hasn't been a problem. I can't think of a student who didn't graduate because they didn't pass MCAS. That happens in other places, but it hasn't happened. So a long story short, we know who the students are. We provide them with intervention support, and we get them support to pass.
Great. Do you think this is a year that we'll forever have the asterisk next to it?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think so.
Emily?
Just, so this acceleration versus remediation horrifies me. It sounds to me like passing. It sounds to me like not going back and addressing needs of students and in fact bolstering them up enough to get them through and move them on to the next thing. I think of how hard parents, especially at the elementary level, have to fight for remediation when needed. And I'm concerned that this format is going to make that fight even more difficult and challenging. So is this, talk to me a little bit about that. A lot of students miss, especially in the elementary, some very critical building blocks that require remediation. It requires going back and making sure they have the foundation upon which to learn. That doesn't mean dumbing down, but it does mean remediating.
I agree with you, actually. It means a really nuanced, keen, present level of teaching. I have a great example to give. So today I was meeting with math specialists who used to present. The fifth-grade team at both schools had identified through MCAS and also STAR data that students performed substantially lower on a certain set of standards. And what should we do about it? True remediation, the way the state means it. You would go back, you would bring back the fourth-grade units. You would take the time in the fifth-grade year, you'd go through them again, and then you would jump back forward again. Again, the time should go back and go forward. So we know from the data and the research, which might interest you, if you like, that that doesn't work. So what we're going to do instead, if we look at the IM curriculum, we see where they currently are. We identify some students, because some students, because of better means, might need a different tier of support, right? It's a different kind of remediation than what the state's talking about. So I'd say personalized more. But we're going to sculpt into the curriculum those standards that the students had trouble on. So it's more of a, it's fair that movement oriented to me. Instead of going back and staying back and staying, it's like a loop of backwards. It's harder frankly than just pulling up the fourth-grade units and teaching them again. It's more nuanced than that. But what we're seeing, and the direction of the state telling us, is that it's what works. And luckily, we have the curriculum supports to do it. So I know that in the special education world, and Dr. Hedger was to talk to that far better than me, there are times when students need a different kind of remediation. That's not what the state means. And so I don't know that this is the long story that really needs to be used and forth, but it's the language.
It's pretty bad.
Pretty bad. But I do see, and I think it's really important, especially the data that they show, students from lower-income populations, students of color. There are clear trends in if those populations of kids are given what they're calling remediation curriculum, and how over time, this is back to Hugh's question about algebra, that cohort of kids stays behind. That is, I'm sure we all agree, not okay. Not okay. So this is where we're at this year. And I think, as when I'm seeing teachers put this into action, it's harder, but it is working.
Did they look at in their assessment of students of color or lower income, the fact that they frequently have less access to diagnostics when it comes to learning disabilities? And that frequently, that's why they're in fact not being diagnosed, they're not--
It all connects, right?
Getting the services they need?
It all connects. Yeah. So you can be really interested in the research. At all.
No, I'm just making, I'm really interested in making sure that students who have gaps because of what they've just experienced, get the remediation they need to close those gaps and not because we're on some acceleration plan that we're passing them through while they're sitting in the middle of a lesson, that they are not equipped to be in the middle of it. And they're feeling worse and worse and worse.
It's the opposite. And that's why this language from the state, I don't think is right. It's not acceleration, my foot on the gas, flying Ipswich down 95. It's not just keep going Tracy. It's build it in, it's the just-in-time piece, which is a different kind of teaching essentially. And we need to provide teachers in that because it's what works. So no one wants kids to be left out of time. Nobody wants kids to be dead, caps on the head and cast along. It's not reasonable at all.
But it's a very easy way to make it look a little more equal in statistics and data from the state.
Yes, I agree.
So does this mean that you dedicate, so given an elementary school classroom, the class is moving ahead with the lesson plan, and then you have a TA circling back with those kids, remediating them on things that they may not understand or identify, and circling, circling back, maybe at a different time, or maybe simultaneously do it?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to visualize what that means. Does that mean going forward, we need more TAs to work for an accelerated program and the state determines?
So luckily, we already have a co-teaching model in place for the elementary schools. That is crucial to this, at least to adults in classrooms where kids need it. Plus then, if they're needed. Plus then, we have now the math coaches, our math specialists, Jen and Nina. So that's a lot of adults in the classroom. And add, thankfully, the new benchmark assessment methods by which we have literally almost weekly up-to-date current data on students for your standardized tests, where they are and their performance.
I have two things. So I'm very glad to hear about the more emphasis on analysis of different, in English, like writing more analytical essays and stuff. Because what I've seen, like through my AP classes and through high school, has been like mostly evidence-based writing.
It's all BBQs.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that's really nice preparation for high school and college. And also on the math, it would, I think that I agree with like going forward more with it and then also reviewing stuff that has been learned. Because what I've seen applying to college is like it's difficult if you want to apply for a STEM major to apply if you've only taken pre-calculus by your senior year. And it's very difficult to get ahead once you're a freshman, unless you take like a summer class. But I was advised against doing that. But, so I feel like it puts some students at a disadvantage to some majors and career options. So I think that's really nice to accelerate.
I agree. And I think the challenge, especially as students who from depth into middle school, and then obviously most of the high school, is if we were to do what the state calls, better or worse, the remediation model, there are students who would stay behind, literally the entire way through. It's not a good one. Doesn't mean everybody on the head passed along, tell me a good job, at all. It's much more nuanced than that, but I do.
And to feed on that, those kids are also denied the opportunity of engineering jobs in engineering ever. They're just denied from eighth grade.
So do you think there would be a point where there would be kind of algebra in eighth grade for most students? Or do you think it's going to always be kind of a?
I think we'll always do it best for kids, of course. But right now, a lot of students do already take eighth-grade algebra. And I think that now that we're in the first year of the eighth through seventh of these curriculum shifts, with new forms of mathematical thinking, I hope over time that more eighth graders are prepared.
It seems like already there are more in the classes, which is nice.
The numbers are raised every year, at least this year.
Yeah.
And if that's with a heterogeneous math model?
Yep.
Where they're taking--
Yep, yes it is.
Thank you.
So again, that speaks to keeping students together, accelerating them in tandem with just-in-time supports, which is frankly harder teaching in many ways. Super hard. But it works, and it's what's best for students, I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
It's a lot to soak in.
Feel free to reach out if you have additional questions.
It's interesting how it's a different year because we're looking internally even more at external. And that's probably a good thing.
It's probably a good thing. I agree.
Next year will be a great, great bounce back.
I hope so. I think so.
Thank you very much. Okay.
You're up, Cheryl.
If there's no further questions, we've got MCAS resolutions next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So you pack it tonight are, shoot, I think there were nine resolutions that are going before the annual meeting. That Jeff couldn't be here tonight. He was going to present these. I think, I think we should take them individually and briefly, briefly throw them on the, or discuss. Dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services. Did anyone have any questions or comments about that? Dr. O'Flin?
What happens when these things haven't traditionally been part of our school district? There are a lot of urban districts that have a lot more clinics and services than we do. And I just wonder if this is something that, this would be, would it be relevant to us or is it not relevant to us?
I can't hear.
Is that relevant to us not having school-based clinics and services? Is it relevant to us in a non-urban district, I guess?
You know, I take this, I take this as, we've been adding social emotional supports much, you know, to a greater degree than what our first came into the, what our children first came into the district with. So, so I hear you there.
I just know, I know a number of nurse practitioners who work in school districts for schools who provide full clinic services, top to bottom, for basically medical care within school districts. And this seems to be advocating for that. And this seems to be advocating for that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how that applies to us.
We do a lot of clinics in the elementaries for medical services, dental, eye doctors, I mean, we're already doing it.
We're doing some of it.
Yeah.
I think that the thought process behind these, so just for the folks that are watching this evening, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, has an annual meeting where they, they take up resolutions that are put forth by their various committees. And so this evening, our local school committee is being asked to review, and they have had the opportunity to review, the nine resolutions that will be voted on at the MASC conference coming up in November. And Jeff Poirier, our school committee member, will be representing Ipswich in those votes. So the, the question that's been asked is, you know, how do these resolutions apply to us locally, if it's not something that we, we actively do? And I think, I think the, the answer to that is, while they may not pertain directly to us as a, as an organization, as a school committee, as a state organization, what they're asking for is if we agree that, and I'll read the, I'll read part of this first resolution, "Therefore, be it resolved that MASC support proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services." And so those are, that, that funding would come from the state or national level. It wouldn't be asking our local taxpayers to, to pay that at, at this level.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no. I mean, I, I understand. It's just, anytime there's a state-based set of stans that they'll be taking, opinions that they'll be promoting, they have to agree, they have to appeal to the broader constituency, particularly those places that are, that have more at-risk kids. So I understand that we'll have to vote on some of these things. It's just, some of these issues don't really apply to our school district.
I understand that as well. Like, for example, the use of Native American mascots. We don't have that. So, but I think we should vote on these resolutions as they come. So, make a motion for resolution one, please. Take a motion.
Yeah, I'll move to support.
Second.
Move by Greg, second by Pav. Any further discussion? All those in favor? The homework gap, Wi-Fi internet, I think it's probably easiest to just say, "Be it resolved that, by, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation which seeks to provide free broadband internet to all K through twelve students in Massachusetts."
That's it. Move to support.
Second.
Move by Hughes, second by Greg, all those in favor? The Idea Full Funding Act, "Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon Massachusetts congressional delegation to reintroduce and promote the passage of the Idea Funding Act." Move by Pav. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Greg. Any discussion?
So does this mean it's full funding of special education?
Correct.
How can you not support that? All those in favor? Recess, twenty minutes a day at least.
To support.
Second.
Move by Greg.
Second.
Second by Emily. All those in favor?
Can I ask, can I, can we just read the "Therefore, be it resolved" portions of these, so that the public knows what, what it is that the school committee's...
Twenty minutes of recess. Uninterrupted recess. That's why I'm asking quickly on that. I'm sorry.
"Therefore, be it resolved that the Mass Association of School Committees support legislation calling for at least twenty minutes of uninterrupted, supervised, safe and unstructured free-play recess per day, which cannot be excluded from structured learning time requirements, and may not increase the total number of hours required in the school day for Massachusetts elementary students."
I think we voted it.
We did.
We did. Okay. Zero tolerance, that's the only one I didn't do there for.
No, that's fine.
So that's just twenty minutes of recess. I'd say, I don't know. Zero tolerance policies. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to enact or amend legislation to encourage the use of restorative, therapeutic, and educational approaches to incidents whenever possible over the use of zero tolerance policies in order to provide students the best chance to remain in the public school systems of the Commonwealth."
Support, move to support.
Second.
Move by Hughes, second by Greg. Any further discussion on this?
We've made a small, saw a strong move in this direction for at least the last dozen years here. This is something we do already.
All those in favor? Alternative to MCAS. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees call upon the legislature to establish a commission to research and analyze alternative means for students to demonstrate academic achievement which can be used to satisfy graduation requirements for individual students and accountability standards for Massachusetts public schools and school districts."
Go ahead.
Move by Pav.
Second.
Second by Greg.
Do you guys mind if this isn't unanimous? Because I'm not...
No, I don't mind, because I'm not voting for the other.
I, I feel like we need, this, this is a good example of why this, this type of testing is necessary, useful, useful and helpful, if not for, necessary for all students, it's certainly helpful for all students. I don't understand what you're saying.
Understood. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. And all those opposed?
Four-two.
Four-two. School committees and receivership. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees file for and support legislation which seeks to preserve the authority of the elected body the school committee has provided in Mass general laws by deleting the words 'and school committee' as noted, and by inserting the following: Nothing in this section shall permit the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education or the Commissioner to remove the authority of the school committee." Do you want me to go farther, Dr. Blake? "Be it further resolved that MASC support local initiatives and legislation to restore school committee oversight of the superintendent and/or receiver, including but not limited to goal-setting performance review in the evaluation process." Do I have a motion on that?
I move to support.
Move by Hughes. Second by Greg.
Discussion, please. So this, this basically means low-performing districts, which are considered not capable of recovering from their downward spiral of performance, are taken under the wing of the state and rehabilitated. They change the rules so that they can change policies and so forth to improve performance and maybe get rid of teachers, or I should, get rid of personnel who may not be performing well. This takes that away, or how does that, how does that work?
Of the school, they, they take away the school committee's ability to govern.
That's, that's the way it is now, right.
They take the receivership.
Yeah. In receivership, the, the school committee loses its authority as well. And so this, this resolution is seeking to change that back so that school committee still be...
Who will have the school committee to have voice, but are they still in receivership? And does the state still control them as a thing? I guess that's the question.
According to this...
They will not lose their authority.
They can't remove their authority of, can't remove the authority of the school committee. But they would still be, so, "MASC support local initiatives and legislation to restore school committee oversight of the superintendent and/or receiver." So essentially, it would remove that and the, remove the state from being the receiver and give the authority back to the school committees.
So I'm going to vote against this, too.
Any other further discussion?
I would just, I mean, I'm not sure how it works with schools, but when I think receivership, I think Flint, Michigan, and what happened with the water there. I mean, they took, they took, you know, direction of those things away from the people, and then they poisoned them all. So, I mean, obviously, this is different, but it makes me very nervous about receivership in general.
Well, this is like Chelsea was a chronically failing district, and BU took it over, invested heavily in it, changed a lot of the performance metrics. So, there've been enough, there've been a number of totally, who's chronically been in receivership. I know a bunch of, you know...
Lawrence is right now, and they're experiencing a ton of violence, and the community is pushing to get control back from the state. The state's saying, no. So I think this has a lot to do with what's going on out there.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor? Is there, wait, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Electric school buses, this should be an easy one. "Therefore, be it resolved that MASC petition Congress to appropriate thirty billion dollars for improving the electrical supply infrastructure and providing electric buses and charging stations."
Move to support.
Move by Hughes, second by Kate. I have a question for our finance director.
I want a Tesla bus.
Do we? Well, we'll be, we'll be asked, we should probably start asking Salter now, where they're at, where they're, because there are grant programs out there to get electric buses on the street for this district now, through a carrier. We have a, we just signed a contract last spring. It's a two-year contract, correct?
Three.
It was, it's a three, it's a three-year contract, but there is language, I know that we did put language in that contract regarding the movement toward electric buses.
Have they done, had any movement in the company of Salter? We should, we should...
I don't believe so.
Keep peppering them with questions about that, Mr. McCarthy. Great. Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Okay. Unanimous?
Prohibiting the use of Native American mascots. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees support legislation calling for regulations prohibiting public schools from using an athletic team name, logo, or mascot which names refers to or represents or associated with Native Americans, including aspects of Native American cultures and specific Native American tribes. Regulations would not prohibit a Native American tribe as identified by the Commission on Indian Affairs located within the boundaries of the Commonwealth from choosing to use a Native-related name or logo for a sports team comprised of its tribal members, including a tribal school or intramural league, or from that tribal nation giving explicit consent for a school to use their particular tribal name."
Move to support.
Second.
Move by Hughes, second by Kate. Is there any further discussions on this?
I don't think this applies to us, but how about Massachusetts? Are we going to have to give up Massachusetts as a name, too?
That's, uh...
Maybe change the name of the state.
You mean for like...
It's a Native American.
Massachusetts University, University of Massachusetts?
No, Massachusetts, period.
Massachusetts is...
Well, I mean, but it's not the name of a school.
No, it's the name of the state. It's appropriating a Native American name for your state.
So it's...
It's the same thing as what they're saying here. It says, "Using a school or referring to a team name which names refers to representatives associated with Native Americans, including all aspects of cultures and specific tribes." Which is a state. But I, I don't care. I'm thrilled to exclude Native Americans.
All those in favor? Opposed?
And I still am in favor of changing from the tigers to the clam diggers.
Did you get the votes on that?
As someone who grew up as a whaler, I disagree.
I grew up as a sasachim.
Okay.
Whalers are not very exciting, man.
Right. Thank you very much.
Laura, would you please tabulate that and email that to Jeff for the conference? Thank you very much. I'm very appreciative. And next, we have a finance update from Cheryl Herrick Stella. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. So in your information is our, your budget report as of October nineteenth, we're still tracking the budget as expected, so no concerns with our budget so far. I also included the balances in the revolving and gift accounts and stabilizations as well. So we have about four-point-three million in our gifts and revolving funds, and three-point-three million in our stabilization funds. And I'm happy to...
Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
Could you just repeat those numbers?
Sure. It's about four-point-three million in the gifts and revolving, and about three-point-three mil in the stabilization.
And it's not because I'm so smart, it's because I asked the guy who was next to me, who is smarter than me. But we have a million-nine, roughly, it's an estimate that we're going to use out of the school stabilization fund this year.
Yep.
So the number looks robust right now, but it's not going to look robust.
We already transferred it out.
Yeah, so that, yeah.
Yeah. How much is going out this year?
Million-nine.
One...
One-eight-nine-something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it, again?
Yeah, I'm trying to calculate the number. It's one-eight, one-million-eight-ninety-five.
Just round it up. So it's not as...
Right. Sorry, I've been trying to...
And it's not as super exotic.
Cheryl, on the Munis report, the districts, I mean, each building has a little bit different encumbrances, but largely fairly high encumbrances for the salaries of the education and personnel and district for our senior. No exception is the early child center, which is like completely unencumbered. Is that just because you just paid as they go?
No, so I, from what I understand, actually, there was like a secretary or administrative position that was budgeted for the individual that runs that, and they didn't, they haven't hired the person. So that's why.
So that's, that, that amount of funding is mostly for the administrative person and not for...
Correct.
The other personnel who are buried somewhere else in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I can think of. Thank you.
Do you have any other vacancies that, that, hiring vacancies?
Um, we're still, we're still looking for, I believe we have a speech and language assistant position open at one of the elementary...
Pro-Winter, right?
At the elementary level, yeah. Actually, I think it's Doyon that we're missing somebody.
Okay, so you got the Winter point.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Anything else for Cheryl? Okay. In your packet tonight, it's the Barry Hopping School Committee Self-Evaluation. This is, Barry always wanted to do this, so I'm naming it after him. It's, it's the same Google form we had last year. I'd love to have, have everyone fill it out, and we can discuss next week. Actually, let's talk about the mechanics of this, Laura.
Just to clarify, I'm going to be sending you all a link to the form. The form is in your folder right now, it's just a draft form, so don't touch it, conceal the edits to it. I'll send, I'll email you the link, and then you can use that form. And then it'll come in a spreadsheet, and I will send them out.
So, when would you like us to get them back to you?
When would you like us to get them? Do you want to discuss that the next meeting?
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to do it Tuesday, November second.
Could you give us one or two reminders as that date gets close?
She'll know who didn't send it back, too.
You will be hunted down.
But the, the object is to discuss it at the next meeting. And we started this last year, and it'd be great to continue this tradition. Okay. Okay, so that's that. The town meeting debrief. Anyone have any comments on this past town meeting that they'd like to share?
Pleased by the turnout.
Excuse me?
I was pleased by the turnout.
Yes, it was... Yes, it was 450ish.
No. I thought it was four, I thought it was even higher than that. I thought it was 490, 496.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
I will point out that there was some concern over the lack of restroom facilities at that site.
I was at Triton last night and saw their nice facilities.
Oh, yeah. And you can see exactly what we could and should do.
Yep.
We have that plan in place. And it would have made town meeting, I think it could be under town meeting funding.
Right.
Are we getting some capital money from?
One million dollars.
Million-dollar balance. But, but they'll give you everything you need.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
They just give a million bucks.
Maybe even the public safety building comes in under budget.
There'd be a million left over? Okay.
That was one of my comments, just a personal reflection that a lot of people had said, we will not come back. That was a tough thing to say.
Oh, yeah.
That was my, my, my comment. And it was a great day.
It's nice to see the project move forward so we can hopefully get it to pass at the polls and move forward with our long-term strategic plan here.
Yes. Thank you, Greg, because if anyone's listening, it's October 26th. That's one hurdle. The second hurdle is the poll and the, and the polls open in the morning on October 26th. Please look.
Chubb, before you move on, there was some scuttlebutt on social media backlash against parents bringing their children to the meeting because they were noisy. I just thought as a school committee, we should be aware that that's kind of circulating out there. And I would encourage any parent to bring their children at any age to participate in town meetings or any.
Yep.
Town governing process. I think the comment is ignorant at best, but, you know, we should know that that was.
Thank you. I did, I did see that in the paper. I think it was in the paper as well.
Yeah. I think it had, yeah, had to do particularly with the stu, with the, with the families that were sitting in the bleachers, on the stands. And, I mean, they are noisy, but you know what? It was outside and, you know, I don't know that we, that we could have done anything to, to prevent that.
I'm the guy that told the guy with the dog, he had to go sit in the bleachers because dogs weren't allowed on the field.
Right.
I hear you. The, and I wanna go back to Saturdays again because it was a lovely day. It was a lovely Saturday. It wasn't raining. It was supposed to rain. But we do, we do miss our young families because of so many other Saturday obligations that it's great for folks that don't have kids.
Yep.
But it is not great for those with children. So, so, you know, I, I, I'm still in favor of an evening presentation, although it was a lovely day.
I'm with you. I mean, unfortunately, it was a short meeting, relatively short. But, you know, a lot of people did miss because of kids' activities. And I was, you know, down to the minute to get that vote off before I had to leave for one of my kids' things. So, it is a challenge.
Yeah, I just showed up for nine. That's all I made.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Blake?
Yes, thank you. It's been a quick two weeks since our last meeting with the holiday, the district-wide professional development day and jury duty last week. It was a short, quick week. I met with Chris Race to review the facilities projects and received some updates on the heating and ventilation status. They found some cracks in the boilers here at the high school during their inspections this year. Both boilers have been repaired and are now ready to operate for the heating season. The controls project for both the elementary schools, Doian is complete and they're working on the Winthrop School. We continue to have what, what I call pop-up issues in, in some of the classrooms, meaning, you know, the systems are old. So, you know, we're having to replace some thermostats. We're having to replace a, a motor here and there that, that burn out. And, and so we're, you know, we're making those repairs as, as they come up. Our professional development day was very well received. The staff appreciated hearing from Lynn Lyons and all that she had to offer. The, the main focus was on, on social emotional learning and mental health and, you know, reducing anxiety for both staff and students. Variety of breakout sessions were, were also well received. Some of the topics included, again, the mental health. We did some work around cultural diversity, self-care, and special education topics. The, the feedback was, was very positive and will be continued, we'll have another professional development committee meeting here in a few weeks just to review the results and start planning for next year. One of the, one of the unfortunate things I'll say is that the way that the school year works, we really only have that one profession, that one full professional development day during the, during the school year in which we can have all the teachers working together. A lot of districts have two or three days where they can capture some time at the end of the year. So, we're, we're trying to look at different ways that we can, we can manage that a little bit differently moving forward. This past Saturday, I did attend the town meeting. This week, contrary to last week, this week has been very busy with meetings and activities. I met with Tracy regarding the presentation that you heard earlier this evening. I'm back to meeting monthly with all of the directors. So, this week I met with the athletic director and the tech director just to review, you know, their departments and get a status update from them and, and start planning ahead for the, for the new budget. I also met with the Doian principal and tomorrow I'm scheduled to meet with the Winthrop principal and those are our weekly meetings. The communications and sub, and budget subcommittees met this week in addition to a negotiations pre-meeting and a negotiation session with the IEA. The administrators, counselors, and program managers received training on Tuesday during our admin meeting on section 504 from one of our attorneys, Colby Brunt. Tracy and I had a meeting with one of our vendors to discuss product concerns and delivery issues. I think we've, we've worked that out to, to our benefit. I've had several meetings regarding the new part-time HR position that the finance office is contemplating. Yesterday I was able to participate in the walk to school day with parents from the Winthrop School. I walked from DJ's Variety Store over to the Winthrop School. It was a nice way to get to know some of the families and the students. Later in the day, I was able to watch some of the Spirit Week competitions at the high school stadium, which was a lot of fun. It was great to see the, the kids and not only the kids, but the staff interacting on the field with them. Yesterday I had a meeting with the par, the presidents of both Fries groups and the elementary principals to discuss the McAdams Wishing Well Fund and how that is gonna work this year. This morning I met with our science consultant to review the progress, his progress and some of the initial findings. As you know, a FEFFY's grant was written this year to take a deep dive into our science facilities at the middle and high school and make recommendations for not only improvements, but some, some visionary activities as well. And this afternoon we had a meeting of the edeval committee just to make sure that the educator evaluations are underway and that the, there aren't any issues with forms or anything like that. And then just before this meeting, I had my second community event cider with the superintendent at Marini Farms. And I had a very quiet, uneventful, zero attendance hour. So, I had myself a cider doughnut and a glass of cider and just prepared my, my comments for tomorrow's afternoon messaging. So, hopefully they'll go a little bit better in the future. I mean, it was well advertised. It was, it was out there on social media. And so, you know, again, I think it comes down to the time of day and other activities and things. So.
My next step on November 4th with the school. And I'm having trouble even getting ahold of the folks at the, shoot, I keep forgetting.
Sandpiper.
Sandpiper.
Sandpiper Bakery.
I've stopped and lost my card.
What day is that?
The 4th.
What day of the week?
It's a Thursday.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dustin Hoffman. Sorry. It just happened.
I think I are gonna try an afternoon at the Y.
Oh, there's a good catch.
That's a good one, too.
Or five in the morning at the Y. That'd be good as well. I'm, I'm suspicious about the Sandpiper one coming up, but we'll try.
Yeah, the Y gives us a captive audience, so.
Right.
Yeah, and Zoomies is phenomenal. So, but I'm hopeful that the Sandpiper one will be, be as, as well received as, as Zoomies one was. Okay. Subcommittee Working Groups and Liaison Reports. We had a lot of folks meet. These is for budget. And I know budget met.
Budget met. Topic of discussion is furthering the override movement. The first step that we, we came to an agreement on is getting a community meeting together the end of November slash early December. We're trying to nail down a location for that right now. And then we'll begin to start advertising. The goal is to try to get a community group together to sort of be supporting the override, getting word out, communicating it. We're still working to finalize the numbers and, and that sort of thing. But the next step for our next meeting is to have the, the meeting location finalized.
Do you need, here's a, here's a crazy question. Do you need to post that meeting? We could post that meeting, right? Because if four school committee members go, do we need to post that?
The public meeting?
Which?
The override, the information meeting on the override. What's that?
Who's hosting the meeting? I mean, if, if we're hosting the meeting, yeah, we have more and more people.
I would say the budget sub meeting, posting and override and public meeting, yes.
You should post it.
Yep.
I agree.
I think the more posting that happens, the better. Again, there's a lot of scuttlebutt and it's, despite the fact that all these meetings are talked about here and they're linked there and they're on the school website, people are complaining over and over again. I know you saw it about, nobody seems to know anything. Nobody seems to hear anything and helps out for a vote. So, there's, if there's a way to come up with new and creative places to get this information out outside of the traditional school committee venues, we've gotta come up with them. Because people just aren't, they aren't seeking it out on their own and they're complaining that they're not getting it. So.
This meeting isn't so much our meeting. This meeting's an organizational meeting.
No, I know that.
There's no organization.
I know that, but if the entire budget subcommittee's there and then plus the school committee chair, which I'd like to be.
Yeah, let's, we'll just post it. We'll just outside.
Yeah.
But as to Emily's larger point, what's, is there something we can do to?
I mean, I think we should just do in.
You can't drag people into their houses.
In addition to sort of the regular stuff, like an email campaign, you know, I email 20 of my friends, ask them to email 20 of their friends, you know, in a diverse group and spread it, at least in the parent community that way.
Yeah, I, I think that we, we collectively have to be very careful about what that looks like in, in terms of the notification. I think we have to be very clear on the purpose of that meeting and whose sponsoring we're running that meeting. Because what we, what we don't want to have happen is for the school committee to be accused of.
Running a political campaign.
Yeah, running, thank you.
I mean, really what we need is ICE to run the meeting and, and we can show up and talk to them, speak to them. That's probably what we want to happen. You may have to post it because more than three of us will be there.
Right.
Well, the only, the only reason, you, you can all be in the, at a place together as long as we're not deliberating collective, you are not deliberating collectively or making decisions and taking votes, you can be in the same locale.
Yeah, we're not seeing, you know, come to this meeting to support the override.
Wants to learn more about.
Have to learn about it and hear about it.
Yeah, I remember the last go-around, there was that meeting at the Masonic Lodge. And there were some people there that were very against the override, asking the hard questions about why it's necessary.
Yeah, that's something to everybody.
But, you know, let's just post it. I don't, there's nothing wrong with posting it.
Thank you. You gonna do it at the Masonic Lodge?
We're gonna try. I, I need to connect with one of my contacts there to see if we can make that work. I haven't had a chance to do that yet, to do that.
Great. Thank you, Greg.
We can nail down a date as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'll see if I can track it down tomorrow.
Now, I'm going down the rabbit hole that I told Caroline I always go down Cs for communications. I'm gonna stop the, I'm gonna stop for the fun for that. And that's you, Kate, correct?
That's me. Yep. So, communications met. We discussed our next newsletter. We're aiming for the Friday before Thanksgiving, November 19th. But, um, publication date. We talked about content. We decided, similar to last month or this month, I guess, when we highlighted some pain grants, we're gonna highlight some Traversa Lateral Innovation Grants that have been approved the last cycle. We decided to have a piece on the success of the 2015 operational override. So, a little history on that. Greg's gonna do a little write-up on the strategic planning working group, which, you know, that piece we might need to run by some people to make sure it's, you know, in support of, of what they think. Brian's gonna write a piece on the role of citizens' comments in school committee meetings, just to make sure everyone's on the same page with the policies on that. Our next meet and greet is with Jeff and Chubb on Thursday, November 4th. Again, they're aiming for Sandpiper Bakery at 8:30 in the morning. If anyone has ideas of how to get the word out, I'm happy to try to do that. December will be Greg and Tom, the week of December 6th, hopefully at the Y in the early evening.
Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you. Did athletics meet?
Did not. Nope. We haven't met in a long time now.
Yeah.
Like, we missed our spring meeting, I think.
I've gotta say.
I'll, I'll elbow Tom tomorrow night.
I've, I've gotta say to the athletics subcommittee and especially you, Hugh, the, having seen everybody's playing fields throughout all the districts, Ipswich is, is phenomenal.
Our field is great.
Your field is phenomenal.
But no lack of restroom facilities. Have I heard that?
I know that.
We're all operated by the field.
Yeah. The field is fantastic compared to other turf fields as well. Although, although I was at Triton, if you, if you, the only way you can, you can't, you can tell you're at Triton versus Ipswich is that their track is orange and our track is black.
Right.
And that's about it.
Well, the fields have, look, look pretty well, too, for the amount of use it gets compared to other towns, you know.
And it's getting a ton of use, a ton of use.
Yep. So, I, in my meeting with, I was just reflecting back on my notes from my meeting with Tom, athletic subcommittee will meet, will be meeting four times a year going forward, three this, this year. I mean, we kinda got off track because of, of COVID, but November, December will be the first one. So, we'll be looking to schedule that.
This is what I'm waiting for. Okay. Mutual concerns?
We've gotta, we've gotta schedule some, some dates because we had a date and then it actually ended up being the date that we negotiated this week. So, we've gotta change some dates.
Correct. So, Paul and Greg, afterwards, can we?
Yep.
Meet up with, check our calendars?
I'm on mutual.
You're, okay, I'm looking at 2021. I'm looking at last year's. Excuse me.
Yeah, I never heard about any meeting.
Becky sent around a request for a meeting.
I didn't see that either.
You're so concerned?
Really?
That was, that was a while ago. That was a month ago.
Two weeks ago.
It was later, it was later than that.
Stick around. Let's schedule a meeting.
Okay.
Okay. No, actually, you're not on mutual concerns. I'm sorry. I'm looking at last year's list.
It says Chubb, Tom, Emily is right out.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Paul.
I'm?
Yeah, I don't think Chubb is. I thought it was Greg, Tom and me.
Well, I have to get the list out. I have last year's list.
No, I have you.
Who do you have, Laura?
Emily, Tom and you.
Okay. You're not on it.
Great.
You're out.
But you were on it last year.
I was on it last year.
Yeah. Yeah, I was.
We've only met once, though.
Let's, let's try to schedule a meeting, get, check our calendars.
Get some dates together, right, okay.
Thank you. Negotiations, we met. Operate, op, there's nothing we really need to say about that or can say about that. Operations hasn't met. Policy is meeting next week.
Right, next week.
Working groups. Anybody meet on a working group? Okay, liaisons. Climate resiliency, we met Tuesday. It's in my notes, but I won't be able to find them right now. The, uh, there's a climate, there's a questionnaire that goes out to all town departments and I, that's why I asked you if you've received a questionnaire from the climate resiliency committee. I'll follow up with that and make sure you get that. And I don't know, Chris Raves may have got that. We discussed feasibility study and the boiler feasibility, scope. The engineer's been hired. It's going to be a couple of months to perform that and stand by for that. Then the other thing the climate resiliency committee discussed was that when you have a project like the boiler project or like some other municipal building project, whether it is consistent with the municipal zero carbon resolution. That's all. Any other liaison committees? CDP, no. IEF?
We have not met since our last report.
Okay, and we have Jeff going to the annual meeting next week. Pain Grants doesn't meet, of course, till next spring. How about, did you do your second round?
Not yet there. We just got in everything in. We're trying to pick a time to meet. Hopefully it will be next week or the following. Really good application, as always.
Great, super, thank you.
Steve, team has its first meeting next Tuesday.
Thank you, that's next, thank you, Pov. Uh, strategic.
CPAC.
CPAC.
No, this month's meeting was the Basic Rights Workshop. I think people would like to hear how they, I call it audit, I don't know what you call it, that happened last year. I know part of it got finished and part of it was pushed off, but people are curious what the results of that were. Also looking forward to hearing more about the middle school IEI process that we talked about last meeting, or not IEI, IEP process, whether or not that's a shift or what, what's going on there.
Okay, anybody else on, been busy a couple of weeks? New business? Dr. L. Flynn?
Two things, sorry.
Are you done?
No, I'm just talking. Between last meeting and this meeting, Marblehead opened their new combined elementary school, 500 student, combined for three former elementary schools that all came into one in Marblehead. And Swamp Scott passed a new 900 student elementary school that combines all their elementary schools to the tune of $98 million.
And Swamp Scott's had previously had a proposal fail.
Exactly. So, so these are two local examples, combined elementary buildings that have been successfully built in one case and just opened in the other one just passed.
Thank you for that.
With numbers that are similar or greater than ours.
So, which would lead me to a third question, since you may be the arbiter of all this right now. Where's Gloucester at with their proposal? I know it went through, it got passed by the town, do you know?
I'll look online. And I, in addition to this, let me look up Gloucester, by the way.
It's on my homework to-do list anyways.
Breaks ground for new elementary school. I don't know where they stand. Looks like they just broke ground two hours ago, right?
There you go, up to date, thank you.
Gloucester Construction, a $66 million elementary school project is broke ground today and is scheduled to be completed in autumn of 2023.
Fabulous, and that was on a.
There it is.
That was on a park that the school, that the city council, the city council approved and the town voted on. Thank you.
I also have a question for Brian. November 1st is coming. The state asked us if we have 80% of our students vaccinated, 80% of our teachers vaccinated, we could go maskless on November 1st. Does that still stand? And what are our statistics at this point and how do we know, what do we know about?
Yep, so right, yep, yep. So, great question, and I did ask that question this afternoon. We have 56% of our students that have reported or their parents have reported that they're fully vaccinated. We have 99% of our staff that is fully vaccinated, so we're not anywhere close to the 80.
Is 56% is what's reported or it's just we know or people just aren't vaccinated?
That's what, that's what we know, so.
Yeah, you know it's people submit vaccinations.
Submit, between a combination of what they submit and what we can, we can glean from, no, that's middle school and high school, so. And then the second part to your question is, I don't know that that's going to necessarily stand. I know that there's been discussions with the superintendent's association as well as other folks at, on Beacon Hill. And I think that, you know, next week we should hear something more definitive from the commissioner. And that's all I'm allowed to say about that.
I was looking at the case numbers. I think Ipswich has, if I read it right, 47 cases new in the last two weeks?
No.
That's not right?
No.
Not in the schools, I mean the town.
Yeah, no, we have, there's currently nine active cases in Ipswich and the positivity rate is one point. Let me get to my, I've already got, I got the data from Colleen yesterday, so let me just look here quick. The positivity rate in Ipswich is down to 1.4 from 2.6 last week and there's currently nine active cases in Ipswich.
That is good because it was 3.3 and then down, down to 2.6.
Yeah, it was, it was 2.6 and then now it's 1.4. We only had one case that I had to report to the state. It's interesting that the, the state is recording from Wednesday after 5:00 PM to, to the following Wednesday at 4:59. But our week, our data that I report to the community is, is Friday to Friday. So when I report tomorrow, we didn't have any cases because that case was last Friday and I reported that, I had to report that to the state now, but I reported it to the community last week, so. I have a.
You had the same kind of problem, the reverse problem, a few weeks ago.
Yeah. So, so that's where we stand. You know, I think, you know, overall, we're, we're in good shape. You know, the, the mask breaks are, are working. I think we have a, a good level of compliance with both staff and students. You know, I'm not sure exactly what the messaging from the commissioner is going to be, but he was, I was on a conference call with him this week and he was asking a lot of questions about experiences around the Commonwealth with, with case rates and issues in the communities and comfort levels with unions and things like that, so. Next week we'll have more definitive information. I, I, well, I have one other piece of new business that I'll share in just a second, but I want to make sure that you're.
No, no, that's all I was looking for, I was just looking for your read on where we are with COVID. And obviously vaccination for 5 to 11 is coming and that's going to be a big sea change.
Yep, it's going to be huge, yep, yep. But again, it, it's huge in the sense it's a wonderful opportunity, but as we're seeing with the, with the 12 to 18 population, either, either they're getting vaccinated and we don't have that data, you know, or they're not getting vaccinated and I'm not sure what.
Should we pay for someone to call or reach out to all these families who have yet to send in their data? I think it would be valuable for us to have information.
I don't know that we can force them to tell us.
I think we can ask them. They may not have just done it, you know, you might just ask.
Yeah, yeah.
I think 56% may not reflect what it really is. At least based on the state data. It speaks to more like 75, 80.
I'm always, I'm always, I know we're going to have this debate when it comes time, but there's a lot of debate to, of, of, of this, this social and emotional part of some kids wearing masks and some kids not wearing masks in school and, and how we should treat that in our district. So, you know, that, that debate will, is to come. I hope. Okay.
You have one more thing, Brian?
I did. So tomorrow in my, in my weekly message, there'll be a link with a, a letter from our food service director. We're, I think everywhere is experiencing supply chain issues and the variety of foods that are, that are, that we're able to get delivered to the schools, so. Megan Person, our food service director, is sending out a, a letter just asking for patience as we navigate, you know, these, these new challenges because there's a lot of things, you know, menus are changing on a regular basis. Supplies aren't coming in as they're expected. We're not able to get certain things from, from different vendors. And so, you know, she just wants to, to acknowledge that there, yes, there are issues and that, you know, we're, they're doing their best to, to make sure that we, you know, that we're feeding the kids, so. So that'll be going out in the, in the weekly message tomorrow.
Okay, any other further bit, new business? Vouchers and bills, all set?
All set.
Beautiful. Consent agenda, move the Ipswich School Committee to accept the open session meeting minutes from Thursday, October 7th, 2021. Move the Ipswich School Committee to approve a check in the amount of $1,798.99 to be deposited in the Winthrop gift account from the Winthrop prize to be used for the purchase of a cold laminator for the math program. All those in favor? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks very much, Ipswich. See you in a couple of weeks.
Microphones remain hot while we're wrapping up here, so. We can talk calendar in a minute here, as far as when we can schedule.
That's right.